Welcome. All right, let's start with roll call. Blake?
Here.
Robert, Robert's gonna be late. Merle?
Here.
Kelsey?
What?
Thanks. Glenn?
Yeah.
Jenny?
Here.
We got you, Kelsey. Crystal here. All right, we will move on to budget legions.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, if you have a chance, I would take a motion for the agenda.
I'll make a motion to review the agenda as presented.
All right. Perfect. Any discussion? Really nonchalant vote, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Do we have any public comments? I didn't look. None? We're good. All right. ASB.
Welcome.
Yeah. Um, I want to start off by apologizing on behalf of us because we just recently found out how we're supposed to be coming to the board meetings like, like what we're supposed to bring and represent from our school. And it's kind of like awkward since we've already been to a few meetings and we didn't know how this worked.
Yeah. You know what, all of us have a lot of grace for each other because this is a learning curve.
Yeah.
So I just appreciate that you actually came back and didn't fail. And thanks again for like being on the cheer team too. So you're good.
Thank you.
Um, so first off with one of our clubs has been FFA. Um, their most recent activity was they had a stand at Waco handing out like food and cookies and snacks to try and help fund their program.
Excellent.
Um, FBLA will have, will be having their first uh testing for regionals is this week, I'm pretty sure.
Mm-hmm.
Um, our club ASB, we've been working on a lot of just our new school dances, um assemblies that we do throughout the week and just like uh new ideas about what we can do for our school. Oh yeah, just to mention, um, we do have a, an assembly this Friday for students of the term. And I think we're gonna have when we come back from break for winter formal for.
Sure.
Yeah. Yes.
NHS.
NHS, oh yeah, they're starting to plan their blood drive, which is gonna be February nineteenth. Um, yeah, I think that's yeah, that's from what we know that's. From what we know right now, that's it, but we'll definitely come next meeting more prepared and we'll have like, um, all the clubs tell us what they're up to and what they have going on. So you guys are more informed. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We will not be offended if you're leaving for a game.
Thank you.
Have a great one.
Thank you. Have a good evening.
Bye. Hey, YNME will not be here tonight. Moving on. Uh, we are gonna, do I need to read this? Are we good for acknowledgement, just mentioning that? For the budget?
Acknowledgement is just fine.
Okay. So just to acknowledge, we have a notice of budget vacancies for, and there's an FAQ and a candidate application in here. Um, I'm sure there's more information if you want to contact the district office, Diane.
When are you requesting those, PM?
January twenty-sixth.
Okay.
And just a note that we've moved to an online applica- application. So it's hopefully easier for folks, but if people do have any difficulty accessing it, they can just contact Diane and we can, we can always go old school paper pencil if that's helps people. But we thought that the online form would be easier.
Thanks.
Mm-hmm.
Merle?
Our all four positions, three-year positions, and so our older, the ones that are already on are returning. The other three of them, assume?
Their terms are not up yet.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
Thank you.
This will be written in three years' terms.
Mm-hmm. All right, moving on, we have to acknowledge an overnight field trip of the high school wrestling tournament, December twelfth and thirteenth in Coos Bay. We have also acknowledged overnight field trip, high school varsity boys basketball, also in Coos Bay, December eighteenth through the twentieth. Moving on to consent agenda, I would entertain a motion.
Second.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing then we'll move to a vote. All those in favor say aye.
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 Go ahead. You good? Okay, Blake was just silent. Okay. Um, oh, I'm sorry, all those opposed? Motion carries. Okay, number six, business and budget.
Wonderful. Thank you all. And so uh financial reports as well as a memo are available linked on our board agenda. Uh, so tonight I'm going to be sharing with you a couple of, couple of details. Uh, first piece I'm gonna discuss real quick is a financial report timeline adjustment. And then we'll talk, uh, we'll move into some uh budget variances that we've identified for twenty-five, the current fiscal year, two thousand twenty-five, twenty-six. Just letting you know where we're sitting and then a quick summary on looking ahead. So in terms of the financial report that is linked on the uh website as well as in, in the agenda, I, you may notice that this again is a financial report ending October thirty-one, twenty-twenty-five. The financial report that was provided at the November board meeting also was as of October thirty-one, twenty-twenty-five. However, the timing of our board meetings does not allow for the complete, what is called close of a financial month by the second Monday of a month. And to provide a financial report on, in this case, it was, I think, November tenth, for the calendar month of October, it does not fully encompass all of that activity that needs to be fully reconciled, reviewed, and analyzed. So what we are doing uh moving forward to provide um everybody with a complete and comprehensive financial report as well as the critical analysis of that. Um, at this December meeting, I'm presenting the October month-end financial report. And moving forward, your financial reports will be approximately six weeks uh uh behind, if you will. So our January meeting will have a November closed report. I do really believe that um this is gonna provide uh more in-depth uh information and greater analysis uh for, for the board. If there were to be any urgent issues within that, that time period between that month-end close and the current board meeting, we absolutely would be bringing those to your attention as well. Uh, I made a note that property tax collections uh are underway. So I know as much as we all grown, when we get the bill in the mail for our property tax uh collections, the school counts on those property tax collections for a significant source of our revenue. When people pay their property tax bill, we receive revenue. When people choose not to pay their property tax revenue bill, we do not receive revenue. So property tax collections are very impacted by economic indicators. And so there are concerns in uh when there are economic issues happening in our communities that can greatly impact the revenue that, that a school district sees. And then finally, uh, just wanted to share that um a state revenue forecast came out on November nineteenth, just a week after our last board meeting. It did provide a more positive outlook than originally anticipated. However, still uh projects that the state of Oregon budget has a deficit that needs to be uh rectified. Uh, the legislative uh leg- legislature will be meeting in February and March for what's known as the short session and will decide what adjustments are going to be necessary to the state budget to balance the uh state budget for the biennium, which we are now a quarter of the way through already. It began July one of twenty-five. So any budgetary impacts that they choose to uh make, say as announced in, in March of twenty-twenty-six, we're already nearly halfway through the biennium. So I would use a perfect example, if they reduced um funding to Oregon Health Plan by one percent, because you're already halfway through a, a biennium, it technically would be almost a two percent, essentially a two percent cut in that second year. Because you, it is a, it is a reduction to that biennium funding. We will definitely keep the board up to date as we learn more on that. So now on your screen, I've also wanted to point out a few of the uh budget impacts that we're already uh aware of for this year. Um, this first slide is showing our beginning fund balance. And the green bar at the top is showing where our beginning fund balance for our general fund was on July one of twenty-twenty-four. So we're talking a year and a half ago now. Our July one, twenty-twenty-five budgeted beginning fund balance was two-point-oh-two-one million. While our audit is in the final stages of being completed, I am expecting that that beginning fund balance will come in just a bit short of what was budgeted at one-point-eight-nine-five million, which is a reduction in anticipated resources of a hundred and twenty-six thousand for this year. Beginning fund balance essentially is what do you expect that you have money, money on hand that can be used for your expenditures within the year? So essentially, this is a hundred and twenty-six thousand dollars of revenue that will not be available for this year. Unfortunately, on the next slide, this is another significant budget impact that um I'm projecting. Uh, the green bar is showing our actual transportation costs in uh the twenty-four, twenty-five school year. Uh, the hope was that those costs could be reduced for the two thousand twenty-five, twenty-six school year uh with a reduction in the budgeted amount. Unfortunately, at this point, um, our projections are that our transportation costs are going to come in closer to two-point-eight million, potentially creating a five-hundred-thousand-dollar excess expenditure uh over the budget. The financial report that is linked online indicates um this very finding. And I, I really encourage people to look, to look through that financial report uh for additional information on where we are projecting our budget may, we, we may come in under budget on expenses, where we may come in over budget on expenses. I've included a quick slide regarding our enrollment. Um, you know, unfortunately, in the month of November, we did see a reduction of eight students. Um, every student is, is critical to our success and we are doing everything we can to engage as many students and retain as many students as we can. But as our state school funding is tied directly to enrollment, as well as a lot of our grants are tied directly to enrollment, uh, making sure we, we have uh as, as many kiddos here as we can attract is, is key. So. Finally, looking ahead, um, this is a table that is included on the bottom of the financial report um this month. Again, that financial report is linked in the uh agenda. But I added this, this month uh to show at this point in time, I am projecting our revenue could come in approximately three-hundred-and-thirty-one-thousand dollars above what we budgeted. That is a positive variance. I'm projecting our expenditure variance could be one-hundred-seventeen-thousand and that would be, that is again a positive variance, meaning we will spend one-hundred-seventeen-thousand less than budgeted. Again, this encompasses that five-hundred-thousand-dollar excess expenditure on transportation because it is my projection at this point in time that there are other buckets that are going to come in under budget. So you've got certain buckets that, that are projected to come in over budget, others projected to come in under. As the year continues to go on, we will be monitoring that and it may require some board action to modify our budget authority between those budget uh buckets. Excuse me, budget buckets. At this point, um, you know, I am projecting a potential ending fund balance on July thirty, excuse me, June thirty of twenty-twenty-six, potentially over one-point-seven million. However, I am really, really need to stress that that positive projection for revenue includes approximately two-hundred-and-eighty-thousand dollars of extra revenue we are receiving right now due to our increased transportation costs and due to our ranking statewide. And we are currently projected to receive eighty percent reimbursement on our transportation costs. If one other district comes in, one dollar per student higher than us on transportation costs, we will drop to a seventy percent reimbursement. So when I'm saying I think we're gonna spend two-point-eight million on transportation, if they're giving us eighty percent and then they drop to seventy percent, that is two-hundred-and-eighty-thousand dollars that we would have to hand back to the state of Oregon. We will not have that answer until May twenty-twenty-seven, after all audits are completed. And I, I know we've talked about this, but it's just extremely critical that we continue to stress the importance of our ending fund balance may include funds that are truly not uh yet secured. Additionally, the expenditure variance that I'm showing, that is with the idea that we will continue to be extremely conscious of our spending. And we have been working with our administrators to really work on, on, on looking at things with a new lens and looking at our expenditures to make sure it is truly the best use of our resources. Uh, those, we must, must, must closely continue to monitor all of our expenditures to meet this page's targets. So as the uh financial update I have for you this evening.
All right, if you guys have any questions, you can send them to me and I will be sure to get you answers uh as soon as I can.
Thank you.
All right, moving on, uh, SIA grant.
Okay, so we gave you guys a report um last month about our uh school um SIA grant and uh gave you information about our expenditures and like how we're planning to. The thing that they told us we didn't have to do, but apparently we did, was let you know that we also have grant agreements. And so these are the grant agreements. Um, they do need to be approved, correct? And as, so that we can then say, tell the state that you have approved and they will release the funds to us.
So. Uh. And it basically is just the agreements that um, can you, you, you know the agreement part more than I do.
These are uh a, a uh intergovernmental agreement uh that indicates uh the parameters of the grant. It'll define the amounts of the grant, it'll define the responsibilities of each party as well as a lot of legalese. So you are absolutely welcome to read all twenty-eight pages of the linked grant agreement uh for your uh reading pleasure. And uh, but we will need a board approval to uh, to.
To accept.
Accept the funds.
And this is also posted on our website um with our SIA report that we did um in the fall, so that King can look at it. All right. All right, her motion?
Make the motion that we approve the grant as uh ready to submit.
Do I hear a second?
I'll, I'll second that.
Any discussion?
I don't wish masterfully done. That was hoping I did the whole twenty-eight pages, but I read a number.
Thanks, Merle. Okay, hearing then we'll move to a vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. Superintendent report.
All right, well, this is our annual deeper dive into the state report card. And so Desiree and I are gonna walk you through how to understand the state reports. She's gonna take the first several slides uh until we get into some of the data that are tied to my goals and then we'll kind of tag team it from there. So I'm gonna turn it over to her to kind of walk you through how to understand the state report card.
So I will go into a lot of depth on this just because I know we have a lot of uh, the board members have been with us and you guys are familiar. But I just wanted to give just an overview of what you see when we get the state report cards. So we get two different state report cards for each of our schools. The first are just this general profile overview. And then the other ones are called detail reports where they go into the more specifics and um longitudinal data on each of the different categories that um we are measured on from the state. So the first section, we get to learn a little bit about each of our schools and who they serve. Um, the enrollment that is listed is about the first day of school or first day in October um for twenty-five, twenty, twenty-four, twenty-five. Um, as well as just information about our um makeup of our students and our uh staff and who serves our students. Then it has a section about the different pieces of the staff, um, including what is our generalized FTE? How many counselors and school psychologists do we have? And the teachers defined as anybody who is a teacher, a head teacher, a special education teacher or a physical education teacher. So that's the, where that number of teachers is. Um, and then it also talks about our retention rate. So how new are our teachers? Do we have teachers who have worked with us for multiple years as well as the retention rate of our principal? Then it breaks down into each of the main categories that we get scores on. And for all of the schools, there are basics like our class size and our regular attenders. And you're gonna get both where we're at as well as what the average for the state of Oregon is. And then for our elementary and our middle schools, we also get scores on their English Language Arts and Mathematics and Science. This does not exist on the primary school because they don't test until third grade. But on uh the intermediate school and the middle school, you get that academic success. And then for the high school, we get our academic success as measured by on-time graduation, our five-year completion rate and our college-going rate. I will, just as a disclaimer, these are just images that I grabbed from the state. These are not from our report card. You can, but you can see that. Um, I've linked all of our report cards in the board report I provided and they will also be provided on our website. And we'll send out tomorrow morning a message to parents, letting them know that they can view our school report cards there. And then for our elementary and middle schools, they break down the different metrics by our demographic areas. So our regular attenders, English Language Arts and Mathematics. And then again, we break it down for our high school as well with our um regular attenders, English Language Arts and Mathematics. So with that, um, the other piece, I mean, is it the next slide? Yes. Okay, so just as a reminder, when we think about, the school report cards gives us big information about each of the schools. But the actual integrated plan metrics, the things we are then measured on as a district, our regular attenders, third grade reading, eighth grade math, ninth grade on track to graduate and tenth grade on, or twelfth grade on time graduation. And with that, and this is something that's kind of important, so you're, when you see the differences in the data, when we look at our school report cards, that is all the students. So for example, in the intermediate school, we're seeing the average scores for the reading, for example, of third, fourth, and fifth grade. But when we talk about it at the district level and when we talk about the district report card, because it also has a profile view, is just for third grade that we're looking at. So you're gonna notice, for example, that we're gonna talk about third grade reading scores because that's our integrated plan, it's what Dan's um uh goals are written around. But when you look at the intermediate schools, reading scores, they're actually gonna be lower than the scores we talked about today because we pulled out just the third grade scores, whereas the report card is talking about third, fourth, and fifth grade. Same thing with math at the middle school, it's sixth, seventh, and eighth. But we're gonna only talk about eighth grade because that's what we're measured on for the state. Okay?
So we're gonna kick things off by talking about one of the things that the state looks and judges you on is your participation rates. And we've had conversations before about this, especially when you look at those high school numbers being um, being much lower. And so um, and so you can see that we are above the state average at the intermediate and middle school in both of those areas. And then this kind of takes you into a deeper area where it says, you know, so for instance, at the intermediate school, we met in all categories except that we were below that ninety-four-point-five uh for students experiencing disabilities and multiracial students. And then obviously did not meet in high school. And so I think it's one of the things that really important that, you know, the, the state brought these expectations around, uh, probably almost going back, all the way back to No Child Left Behind in those eras because that was an era where we wanted to test every single student because you couldn't compare apples to apples if certain schools said, hey, we're not gonna test every kid. We're not gonna maybe test our students with disabilities. And then you'd have these, these testing rates that were, you know, not comparable. And so I do think it's really important to keep, if we're going to be compared and we are going to be compared in the future with neighboring districts and across the state, it's important that we all try to raise it so that we're all, we're um, we're testing, you know, all students. And I will say, and this is sort of tangential, but there are conversations happening around removing the ease of the opt-out because the, the, the pressure around the accountability conversations that the governor and the legislature have had. You know, school districts have said, so where's the accountability if people can just opt out so easily? So it'll be really interesting. I don't think that's gonna come around in a short session. But I'm really curious as to how does that accountability conversation, you know, uh, play itself out when uh it is hard to have apples-to-apples conversation when opting out is so easy? So that was a tangential comment.
No, and it's a, a good example. And actually, here's our high school participation rate by demographic. Um, one of the, you know, with the point that Dan's making about the ease of opt-out for the SBA, um, parents literally just have to fill out a form or let us know like they're not gonna do it. We don't have to, we cannot question them, we cannot, we get, try to convince them, but it's usually a pretty moot point. Um, whereas the science, for example, the parents actually have to handwrite a letter or like type out a letter that explains why their kid needs to opt out. And because it's even that much more of an extra step, we don't get any opt-outs for science. So like that, that's where you see that difference of like how the ease of the opt-out really can impact. The other piece is this, when we are looking at our rates and you're going to see this um in a couple different spots and we're thinking about how these rates were like impact. I guess I'll use Dan's youth truth example. When we've talked about youth truth, we talk about wanting to hit a certain threshold so that we can say that the data is really viable, that we have a good representation of the students that we serve and uh we wanna make sure that it really represents what we're doing. But when we have opt-out rates at as high as we do at the high school, it's really hard to say like, this is good data. Um, because we know that we have like twenty-five percent of kids that aren't taking this assessment. Um, and we know that some of our more historically underserved populations have a higher participation rate than, for example, our white students. So those are also things we wanna take into consideration when we look at what this data means in terms of our district and our performance.
So moving on to talk about regular attenders. And we've looked at this data before, this, and this was based on our goals. And it is almost identical slide, it was uh kind of embargoed at the time. We were told we were able to use it and share it, but these, you can see the successes in increasing our regular attenders there. So go on to the next slide. And this is a ninety-day trend of where we're at right now. So we are uh still trending above last year's totals even across the board. Now those little trend lines, Des, I was asking Des, are there, are those there for effect? Or what are those telling us right there, those three little dots? And that is actually a comparison to where we were at last year, get um, or what's?
No, it's our current. So three months ago, or like thirty days ago, sixty days ago, current ninety days ago. And so what we can see is currently in the month of like November, um, December, we see a little bit of a downtick, but we're still averaging above where we were last year. So it's not, um, and it, it's pretty average if you think about it. It's holding flu season, uh, kids are getting sick. So we're seeing our generalized rates over the last ninety days starting to tick down a little bit, but still averaging higher, um, in some cases, almost ten percent higher than last year.
Yeah, so those are great numbers to see that ninety-day trend still trending above last year's where we already made some improvements. So um, I don't think we'll take a ton of time going through each of these, but we just wanted, again, this is our kind of deeper dive into data for you to look at to see, you know, where are we at for high school in terms of regular attendance? You've got the state and then you can look at demographic groups. Um, and, and you'll see, you know, another migrant up there quite about higher. Might be a smaller san- smaller size of students, but you'll see that bar higher across the, uh, the attendance uh in every school. Just kind of going through those numbers there. Any question on attendance? All right, let's move on into third grade reading. So again, we saw a ten percent uh increase in um, in our scores there, which is great. And I think that one of the things that. And I think that one of the things that, you know, uh, any of these skills, whether it be reading or math, are skills that are accumulated over time. So I think that this, this is really a testament to, um, you know, the, the primary school as well as our third-grade teachers to have kids uh at a higher reading level uh by the end of third grade. Anything to add to that? We're gonna jump to the next slide.
No, yeah, the next slide.
Okay.
So the one piece and this demographic aspect of it is something we really wanted to bring up because what we are seeing is while we saw a ten percent increase, we're seeing our gap widen, actually. And so the thought of, like, how do we specifically think about the reading skills that our students who have been historically underserved, what do they need? How do we improve that? And we know that when we put in those systems of support correctly, it's kind of the rising tide raises all ships, right? We, we will see an improvement across the board. Um, because that average, when you have, like, our white majority of our student, you know, students, uh, our white students forty-five percent pass rate compared to our twenty-six percent overall, we see how, like, the low numbers for our historically underserved students are really pulling our scores down right now.
I would say that the other thing, if you go back to the very beginning of the school year, before the school year started, and I shared, you know, what are, what's our focus for this year? It was focused on feedback, it was focused on getting better collaborative teams, and then also language acquisition. And I would say that uh for our buildings, uh the focus has been the feedback and the collaborative teams has have been a little bit more technical to put in place with the new evaluation system. So we've spent a little bit more time with our principals saying we need to spend more time on that third focus of the language acquisition piece, because that is definitely where uh we're, we're languishing a little bit. Um, I do know that that's been a primary, a higher focus at the middle school this year. They, they've given it a little bit more attention. And uh Des uh, not tomorrow, Wednesday, has a meeting with our, all our ELD teachers to again to focus that how does their work get its way right into the classroom, every single classroom? These, I mean, these next two ones are kind of like my favorite slides in terms of kind of like you can see, okay, so this is, you know, not the same group of students, but what can we see? Is there some predictability here in terms of how our kids perform year in, year out at a certain grade level? Even though the, the kids might be different, you know, the standards should be the same, the teaching practices should be the same and getting better, you know, what can we see here? And so this just shows you year in and year out at third through, in those different grade, grade levels of how do our students perform at that grade year in and year out. But then it's always good to know, what does the cohort do? So, so for our current, um, so last year's fifth graders, now our sixth graders, be interesting to see, they, you know, you see that growth of where they went from, you know, twenty-seven percent passing to thirty-five percent to forty-two percent. What is that group going to do next year, or this, actually, this year as sixth graders? So that gives you, you know, that's some pretty decent trend as you look at that fifth and sixth grade in ELA, as you see kids, and fourth for that matter, progress toward it.
And for me, what's exciting about this, and this is those discussions we've been having since I first came here, is with ELA, this is us also seeing students now having had a solid experience from kindergarten through, right? So last year's third-grade class, the fourth-grade class um cohort was our first group of kiddos that had had amplified kindergarten, first grade, second grade, and then moved on to third grade. Um, this year's third-grade class, so we're gonna keep seeing those kind of, I, we're seeing growth. We're seeing like, oh, this is kind of working the way we want it to work. And so I'm excited to see as students have those kind of like unified experiences where we're really moving through the curriculum with fidelity, how we're seeing that trend kind of build upward.
Moving on to math, any questions on reading? Okay. Moving on to math, again, we saw um a six percent gain in that. And, you know, getting ourselves closer to our goal, closer to the state. Obviously, the state went up because that twenty-seven percent was the state last year, I'm pretty sure. Um, so we've seen that go before. Uh, moving on to the, the demographics. And so, uh, again, you see our white students outperforming our other groups. You know, and uh, you know, I also wanna point out that the difference between our female students and male students because a lot of work went done years ago to try to balance that out. And so we can see definitely a trend there that we need to, you know, whatever a group of students is not performing to the capabilities we think they're at, we gotta ask ourselves, you know, why is that? What might we do differently? And I think I've expressed to the board before, you know, math is, is, has so much language into it now. It is not just rote memorization of math facts. There is so much thinking and uh re- frankly, reading involved that you're seeing, um, you know, especially for our language students, it becoming more challenging. And again, here's a similar sort of thing, so you can look, what, is there any predictability of how kids are going to do depending on their grade level? Um, you see some arrows going up, some going down. Um, and then we'll move to the cohort group. And so you don't necessarily see the same trend line that you saw in um that you saw in the reading, but you can definitely see a nice with that eighth-grade group, you know, getting a good bump there.
I do have a question. So what do we think's going on with the math scores of the elements? Where it was from fourteen to twenty-nine to eight? Like, what would make that sort of a sign?
Participation rate.
It's a part.
You think that's it?
Yeah, and I think um it's a combo of participation rate and then opt-out by not trying very hard. We heard rumors from, or not rumors, we heard teacher observation, um, they're just like, yep, the kids are just click, click, click. How fast can I get through this test?
And I think the conversations that we've had at the board level, I know Blake brought this up at, at earlier board meeting, is how do you create the culture? We're doing your best every single time. Everybody tries to, you know, everybody's trying, uh, create, you know, a culture where we're all going to do our best on this test. We're not gonna opt out. I mean, those are some things that we need to, we need to focus out at the building level. So we'll spend too much time on these last two because we've, we've talked about these. We don't have the, the, the deeper data uh to dig into on here. But, you know, you can see that we're on the ninth grade on track, that we're, um, you know, we're right there at the state level. We're pretty close to our goal. Um, so there's that data. Any questions on ninth grade on track?
How do we know right now, well, I'll preface this. Will we have a report on where we're at for ninth grade on track?
For my current eighth graders? Yes, yeah. Um, so we can bring that data probably fairly soon because they've had their first round of grades, right? So that's why you have to kind of wait.
Right.
Um, I know the other piece that is happening this year kind of in twofold. One, the high school was really working hard to reinstitute our ninth-grade success teams. Um, and that, that is really coming at the um expectations of the state. We had to go through an audit of our program um through, to get our high school success scholars. And one of the things they identified when they did the audit was that our previous systems were lacking and they were corrupt um in that. So Lindsay is working really hard. They're meeting like every couple of times a month, I believe, where they're looking at grading practices, they're looking at like failure rates, they're looking at trends. Um, so I can, I'll like get some information or possibly have, come have her present because she, she's had some really interesting observations too where, and we brought this data last year, if you'll remember, um, where we kind of could say like, okay, where do we have issues where it's like a student's passed everything but is some, for some reason failing math, for example? Where do we have students who are maybe failing two classes? What's our percentage of students who are basically failing everything? And of those students, what percentage of them have attendance rates that are really low? And I know that they shared with Dan and I, they, they were able to have a really good conversation and shift the conversation away a little bit from the typical, well, they are never here. Because they were able to pull that data out and say, okay, these kids are never here. We understand why they failed their classes. We gotta be here to pass. We're gonna talk about them at a different time because the question is how do we get them to come to school? But these kids are here every day. Why are they failing? And so they're going through empathy interviews and doing different things to kind of get to the root cause of like, what's causing this failure right here? When we know you're coming every day, this is not about missing information, this is about you not engaging. So, um, so I, I think we're in it, we can, we'll bring extra data, and I know they're doing a lot of specific work on that this year. Excellent.
And so this is one where we do, you know, have some current concerns and we, uh, you know, Nathan Stanley brought a report. So we did, they did do a, a pretty good dive into the data to figure out that, you know, that dive, that dip was not, those aren't necessarily students that were here with us the entire time. And, and so I do think that the high school is doing some work around making sure that we see improvement on this and tracking kids, making sure we're having conversations with kids who are not, um, you know, currently scheduled to graduate on time. Do you want any more thing, anything to add to that?
Yeah, I mean, I think this problem has layers to it that are really complex. Whether it is students who are with us for a really short amount of time and then we, you know, like the amount of data we were able to see where it's like this student was with us for a month and then disappeared. Um, students who were with us for inter-district transfers and then disappeared. And because we didn't do the proper communication we should have, we couldn't say, nope, you're back to your old district. Um, and then the, this, I think the issue on top of that, that they're really also surfacing is how are they having those um conversations at an ongoing way with kids about, like, are you aware of where you're at? What does, how are they actually using advice? We're gonna say, let's look at your transcript. Do you know how many credits you have? What's the next conversation that you need to have? And then some of those conversations just haven't been happening. And so there were surprised people who were being informed kind of uh for the first time, like, hey, your kid's not gonna graduate. And so what are the systems that need to be put into place so that those conversations? You know, because sometimes you can do everything you're supposed to be doing, but if you still haven't had a conversation with the family, then we're missing a major enrollment and support.
Any questions?
What?
I'm just trying to figure out. I don't know if it's a disconnect or how are we going from math in eighth grade with a fifteen percent reaching target of Latinos to an on, you know, an on-time graduation where they clearly have to take math for a certain number of credit hours? Um, and we're popping to seventy-one percent. I'm, I'm, how do I follow that?
Right, so I think there's a couple things that um that you're, like, that are true observations. And if, we brought specifically last year the data around like how many kids um passed the state test? How many students from the eighth grade passed their math class even though they didn't pass their state test? And how many of those students passed Algebra I, right? So all those things, when you, you know, kind of do the math on them, start to create some questions. The other piece, though, um, you know, there's always gonna be a disconnect, I think, to a certain level of what I can do in class when I'm getting support and I'm doing my homework, et cetera, and I'm doing the work to earn a grade versus can I apply that knowledge in a new situation when I'm given a test cold, right? Um, and so there's sometimes a disconnect between that, like, you're failing a test score, but I, I've done all my homework, right? Like, what actually mean, what does it mean to earn a passing grade in a class? And those, that's an age-old question of like grading practices that are, is really difficult. It also, I think, is a reflection of the Herculean efforts that are sometimes having to be put into place to get a kid across the finish line. And one of the things that we at least have some on-track, on, like, on-time, you know, track to graduate, and then graduation rates that actually match. I came from a district where it was completely inverted. We had like a ten percent night on-track to graduate rate, and then this, you know, eighty percent graduation rate. And it was like, what are you doing? It's like we are grabbing the kids and dragging them across the finish line. So at least we don't have that quite as much. But we know that there's a lot of systems that are being put into place to get kids across the finish line. And I will say, if we think about Kim's reports around how we're spending money, it's a really caught, it's really expensive to get kids to graduate if they don't leave ninth grade on track. Because we are using FTE to have them retake classes that they should have passed the first time. We are doing FTE and funding like our opportunity center, et cetera, to get the credit recovery. We're funding summer school to get credit recovery. Like, we're doing all this work to get them caught back up, where it's like, it'd be a lot easier. It's kind of the ounce of prevention and pound of cure concept. It'd be a lot cheaper and a lot easier to actually get them on track, on time, all those things, ninth grade, tenth grade, eleventh grade versus what else do we need to, and I'll throw at you to get you across the finish line. So, um, your observation is correct. It is kind of that inverted triangle concept. Um, especially when we know, it also speaks, your question speaks to this larger thing of we're graduating them, but are they actually ready? Did we, did we send them out to the world? Did we send them out to the world with the actual skills they needed? So that's the other piece too, that, that's, it's a question, right? Um, now, I would argue, just with state tests and stuff, like, they are a snapshot of a kid's skill and not necessarily completely reflect about like, oh, they're not ready for the workforce. But I also know that we can look at statistics from what the workforce is telling us, and they're saying not always ready. Not just about our students, but students who don't.
The students, yeah.
Anybody else? Thanks for the data, this is great.
All right, so next up is a first reading of, for policy IIA instructional materials. So, um, when we adopted this in, uh, you adopted this in October, uh, we, there were some conversations around, you know, how effectively are we communicating with parents regarding required reading materials? And so, uh, Desiree uh put together a team of teachers, uh, secondary teachers, uh, middle and high school to talk about how can we come up with a better way of communicating with families regarding the readings that their kids will do? And, and it was focused on, it was the English, English teachers, the middle and high school. And, and so, um, obviously on the screen there is the sentence that's going to be added, or I'm recommending be added to the policy is the superintendent will develop processes to communicate with students and caregivers, both core and supplemental instructional materials that will be required for any courses. And so this is essentially you, the board, you know, putting the expectation on the superintendent to make sure that this communication happens. And so that's my recommendation for changes in policy. Um, and what you can see also there is that this is already in place for a second trimester, correct? Is that, that the expectation is that we are communicating with families what it is their kids are gonna be required to read. I think if you scroll down further in there is, you know, what we're trying to do is kind of not make assumptions about what people's backgrounds, beliefs, just informing them. And then that can lead to conversations of whether there's, there needs to be opt-out uh options for them. And hopefully gives our te- also just gives our teachers a template to work from, to be able to, to communicate those things. And then I have added um a paragraph in the, if you go back to the memo. So this is an excerpt from our employee handbook that I've already made changes into that so that this becomes the expectation that this form gets, gets used and that it becomes a documented expectation. So, um, one other thing just to kind of note is that we've started a practice this year where when you adopt a policy, I send out a communication to all staff about what policies have been adopted. And then for those that are really kind of more of day-to-day interactions that staff might have, I added, add some more explanation. So, uh, should this policy get adopted at the January meeting? Then it would have its, kind of its own highlight of this, this policy got adopted. These are the expectations that we, we use this form and we communicate with families. Questions?
Does that like, so when you, when you adopt a policy like that, and it says that you're gonna develop that? Can you take that to the highlight part?
Yeah.
Um, so does Um, so does that like, let's say you're, hopefully you don't have another superintendent, but if we do someday, right? Does that, does, will that superintendent develop his own as well? Or, or does this carry, this thing carries on?
Well, the expectation carries on and the board supervises the superintendent. So whether, whether, you know, and we might find that maybe we need to add more to this. It's just mainly setting the expectation. So if this form doesn't, doesn't meet our mark and we're, we're still hearing concerns about communication, then the expectation would be superintendent, we're still having this issue that, that communication to students and families is not happening to the degree we wanted to. So the expectation for whoever's in this chair would continue, even if it's me, because if we're not hitting the mark.
Yeah, how, how, how will we know when, I mean, are we going to know when you develop that? Are we going to know that's happening?
So that's, I mean, it should be happening, that's why I kind of why I asked Des is like, hey, this is happening this term is that we want these part of the course syllabus. So each trimester includes a section in your course syllabus that outlines all required long form for the term. And that we covered, covered this information. So that it should be happening. And so obviously like a lot of things, you don't know it's not happening until someone says it's not happening. And then you, you address it. And so then wherever that breakdown is, uh, we can address it, you know, uh, so.
And part of it will be how we hold the principals accountable. They, um, at both the middle school and the high school, teachers are expected to turn in a copy of their syllabus every term so that their principal has it. So when you get that random call from a parent, you can go through your file. And, and so that's where we would be asking them to be double checking those things.
Anything else?
Questions? One is the supplemental and classroom materials. And I think I raised that last meeting that they're not subject really to review, it's up to the future. Uh, Mamuvi Taylor, Spencer Lewis just kind of waved that off because he said, well, that, that Supreme Court decision just, it was self-access materials. But our classroom library and supplemental materials are not self-accessed, they're brought into the classroom. That's just a, a concern, I think. The other thing that gave them a little pause was the five thousand word length. Because that says to me, anything that's not longer than fifteen to twenty pages can be used for supplemental material. And I would just ask the question, why would we choose? And maybe it's not even an issue, maybe we're not of, uh, sensitive and controversial material when we have so much cases to work on there. Just to raise that question.
I think in terms of, you know, the number, I think part of it is that I think to ask a teacher to provide a communication over an article they may find relevant that they, hey, I just read an article that's relevant to this history lesson that we're doing. I'm going to use this as a supplemental material. Now, if there's controversy in it, hopefully we also have other policies about communicating that. So hopefully those are being raised if it's, if it's a, if, if there's something controversial in it. Um, so I think that this was more of trying to get at the books that are being required for reading. And really trying to say, you know, you're, you're, you're teacher, you're giving my student the expectation you will read this book. And you're going to be graded at some level for either your knowledge or whatever skills you gain from reading this book. But that's what needs to be communicated upon. I mean, there's no doubt that, that there can be, uh, you know, teachers will make choices. Uh, you know, they find a video that tries to make an illustration, uh, of, of a point that they're trying to make. Maybe they didn't kind of watch it through a different lens that maybe that there's content. I, I mean, I've dealt with those things before where someone says, hey, I thought a video, I saw a video, I thought it would make a great illustrative point. Blows up on them because it was offensive to some. Um, and so, I mean, I don't think there's any way of mitigating every possible scenario. It's trying to build our system so that we know what to do when it happens. Or in this case, as much preventable, prevent, prevention as we can.
Or per proactive communication.
Correct, yes.
The other, uh, thing that shows up in this materials, uh, selection policy is that if there's an objection by parent or anyone that's allowed to do that, board isn't, but, uh, it continues until the whole process runs its course. And Supreme Court decided and Mamuvi Taylor, no, it doesn't, it stops until we work through this thing. And reach the conclusion, but this policy allows it to continue until that appeal and committee and all that.
Not a hundred percent familiar with that court case, but my recollection of it was refusing to let the student opt out.
Yes, that's right.
And so I think that that's the key component here, uh, at least for our administration, like parental rights and opting out, you know, should always be the rule of the day. That if someone says, yeah, I'm just not comfortable with this, um, don't want this. Um, then as far, there's two parts to that is yes, you will get to opt out. Now, if there's a reconsideration process for those other families that may be okay with that book or they can go through a review process, yes, that would stay in. But I think the crux of that particular case was the school would say, no, you're not opting out, we're not going to let you.
Yeah, that was a key issue. Uh, but there were some others, uh, I noticed in our, uh, policy here in handbook policy. Will say, well, we may not be able to tell you the age of the material, you know, the age and grade level. We may or may not, and I thought, well, why, why not? Is there any problem with determining that? So that was also a, a factor that.
Sure, but I know where that was at.
I'm not sure I do either, like, you talking about the policy?
Policy or in the?
Or in the communication tool?
It says when, uh, when possible, we'll include the age or reading level of the book. And I thought, well, when is it not possible to do so?
Well, so the, the, a good example for, with that, um, is like when you pull up Macbeth from Shakespeare. There, like, on the resources I have, the range of what it says is appropriate, like, oh, who would this be good for? Is kind of up the air and part of it is because it's a classic, it's part of the canon. And a lot of people believe it's required reading that is, you know, should be available. Um, some of it is about like, well, which version are you doing in a bridge version, are you doing this, are you doing that? So sometimes it's hard to say like, oh, this is more suitable for twelve-year-olds. It's not, writings like that are not like, um, uh, a movie where it's rated R, it's rated PG thirteen, et cetera. Like we, they don't do that to books. So a lot of the times it is about looking at experts who are making a good judgment. That's why we use things like common sense media or we look at like the National Library Association. Cause those are people who have some expertise, um, and they can give it. But sometimes they just don't exist. Sometimes it's a, it's a piece of reading material that's just so old that no one's done that kind of analysis on it. Or it's so new where they haven't quite done that analysis on it. I would say, um, I think for me, and when we were working on developing these things, what I would ask is that we assume good intentions on the part of the teacher. And I know that's not always easy to do, um, if you've had a bad experience. You know, there's reasons why we have policies in place where people can file a complaint or a concern or they can go to their principal. Um, but for the most part, and I can say this, having been in education a long time, I have not met a teacher who's like, let's see how much trouble I can get into. They just, it's not worth it. The, the level of hassle it is to teach three different books simultaneously because you pick something that a chunk of your class won't read. It just isn't worth it. Um, I, when I was meeting with the teachers about this, I was talking specifically with a teacher who had had a, a book that a few teachers, parents had said like, oh, I'm not so, you know, um, okay with this. A few more parents opted out and the next year she didn't teach it. She's like, that was not worth it and she took it off her syllabus. I just haven't had a lot of experience where a teacher just deliberately like, I want to see if I can make a bunch of parents upset at me. And really upset kids. I think there are times where they make a instructional decision that doesn't jive with a parent's value. And that is something we can't always predict for everybody. Um, we do the best we can based on what is the theme we're trying to get to? What's a good piece of reading that is both engaging and interesting to kids and will hook them? And, you know, there's, that changes constantly, right? Uh, in terms of the generation and sensibilities and, and what's in the, the world right now that's interesting to them. Um, and so finding those pieces of literature that it's engaging, that will, that will really allow them to want to be reading and, and connected, that changes. But I just, I'm, I've known a lot of English teachers and I just have not met one who is like, I want to see if I can really make my job hard today and, and do something. I'll point out too, part of the long redefinition, five thousand words is about ten pages double spaced. So on a single space, like a normal article, it's less than five pages. So pretty short, like we, and we did that five thousand word because that is that. We, we did, we wanted it, anything that's substantial, we want it listed. So this covers most novellas, most short stories, et cetera, would be covered under this.
I would just, I would just like to say, you know, I've had some issues with this IIA in the past. And I am willing to let Des and Dan implement this and see how it goes. Um, I think that, you know, if it was up to me, I'd have everything in policy. But I did phone a few friends and I was reminded that we don't direct the teachers, we direct our superintendent and it was really hard for me. And so I think, you know, when he, when Des and him brought this to me personally, it really did suffice my intentions of, it gives parents the right to say no. And that's what I was looking for. If a parent disagrees, they can say no. If a parent wants an alternate book, they can say, I want an alternate book. It created a area for communication, which I felt was the lacking piece and the basis of it. Um, I'm not sure I would ever optimize that out of any of what I've had or what I've seen. But I do want to hold that parental line and the parental right to be able to say no when you want to say no. And so that's why I would be supporting IIA right now.
And we even, like, this, um, form is something that hasn't existed that we developed specifically so we can start tracking these things better too. Um, cause right now there is an element of opting out that's a little, almost like anecdotal, you know? Like we knew we had some families opt out, but like really getting them to write things down and have conversations um, is a huge part of it. And I will tell you, a big part of all of this conversation that we've been having with the teachers is an additional component of like understanding. We, a few years ago, we focused on the concept of culturally responsive literature and culturally responsive teaching. And we've had discussions with our teachers about like, what is the culture of North Marion? And how do we pick culturally responsive books to match the culture of our community? And when we see mass opt-outs, which we don't get, I mean, even some of the most, um, like, the most we've had on a book is like five. Like a family, like five families be like, nope, not, not me. Um, so even then, we still have the majority of our students who are like, no, this is great. The, the thing that like Jenny brought up and, and Crystal brought up that we really tried to address is the concept that like, we want to make sure that families know though, we're not just assuming, like, it's fine until they're upset about it. Because like all good parents, we're chugging along, doing the best we can. And we aren't always reading over our kids' shoulders or like, let me read the novel you're reading. Like, no, I'm kind of busy, you know, I have a lot of other things to read in my life. So how do we make sure we're at least communicating so that parents can take a moment and pause and go, ooh, I read from the teacher that I might have a concern, I want to ask more questions and create opportunities for communication. What we don't want to have happen actually is people to discover, and this is how it's typically been prior to this. Is they discover that they don't want to have their kid read something after their kid has already read it. And then they're upset. And then it's like, I don't want to remove this and my kid doesn't read more of it. Um, and we know that that's not good for anybody. And so instead we want to be proactive, get it in front of them and say, you get to make a choice, you have more questions that we can answer for you. And I think the teachers were way on board with that. They're like, absolutely, we can get behind just being proactive about the communication. So that we don't have to deal with it af, on the aftermath. We know that we've already given them an option, upper, opportunity up ahead of, um, everything to do their own, like, research or ask questions.
And I, if I could just add a couple of things, one, I really appreciate Crystal's comments about, you know, working through and developing this. And I realize that the, the language in the policy is super vanilla. I mean, it's just like, it's just one sentence, but I guess also that's, I was more, you know, when issues come up, I would rather actually give you the end product of what's actually going to happen versus to spend time in policy. You know, I, you know, I think policy broadly written allows whichever board, whichever superintendent to deal with the situations at the time. And so I think that hopefully you also see in this is that when issues come up, and we will have issues, whether it's this or that or the other, is I'm going to show you what the end product and the solution is before I bring you a, a, a major overhaul of a policy. Cause I think that what I've given you is actually boots on the ground, what's going to happen with teachers and parents. And to Des's last point is the fact that this really got the entire English department, six through twelve, at the table to discuss. We've got an issue to solve and I think it got their buy-in throughout it because of her leadership to say, we need to be better communicators.
I, if I could read just a couple of sentences yet and then I, I think I, I think too that communication is, is key and if parents know and they really know. And our goal is, is educational achievement, it's not some belief or ideology. And so I have noted also that, uh, I appreciate the proactive approach, I do, and I think we're doing that. And Des, always well-read.
Um, any other comments? I know Kelsey and Blake, we haven't chimed in, so if you have anything. I don't want to ignore you on, online. You good? Robert said you're good, so I'm going to go with that.
So before we adjourn the meeting, because we're right at the very end, there's, so I'm going to ask actually Kelsey. So this future meetings and tentative agenda, this was basically, base, this, is that helpful, Kelsey?
Yeah.
Okay. And so on that, just to give a few highlights of what's coming. And so, uh, you can see middle school report in January, primary intermediate school reports at the end of January. I know UNME was not here, but, and I know it was in our, uh, my weekly update. We've been done, done some really good work with UNME in preparation for bargaining. Bargaining is going to kick off on February tenth, just to put that on your radar. Also, and you've been on these emails, Strategic Planning Team has their first meeting tomorrow. Um, and Jenny and Blake are on that. Also Heidi Torian, former board member is going to be on the group as well. Um, and then this, the last thing on the upcoming meeting agenda is this budget one O one. We're going to probably kick that down a month into February, but I did ask Kim to share a few things about what does that even mean?
Perfect, so, uh, you know, I've seen this called a lot of different things in a lot of places. But, uh, essentially it's a free budget committee, uh, uh, workshop or information session. And it really is just a tool to help equip both the board and the budget committee, should they choose to join us. We will be sure to be, uh, encouraging them to join us. But just really a tool to, to lay the groundwork for the work that we are going to be doing when the district brings the proposed budget to that first budget committee meeting. It's outlining the process, sometimes new budget committee members are often a little bit surprised at, at the process. And, and what is allowable per state law and what is not allowable per state law. And, and what is allowable per state law and what is not allowable per state law. The budget committee process is defined in state law. So it's very, uh, it's just a very helpful opportunity to, to really set the expectations. Outline the roles and responsibilities. It's also going to be an opportunity for me to share some of my ideas. For, uh, how we could, um, look at our budget, maybe through some different lenses. Uh, involving, um, a little, uh, different approach with some of our different stakeholders. And, uh, making sure that we are looking at the why. If we are looking to make changes to our budget, if we are looking to invest in something or make a reduction in something else, why? What is, what is that return that we are expecting to achieve with that? Um, and not just, well, we've always, we've always had that. And so sometimes it, it creates a little bit of a, wait, I've always, I've always had that. Okay, why do we need to keep doing it? And we've had great conversations with our staff. We, you know, at times we'll get a request for, uh, a purchase of something and, and. The inquiry for more information is not to question their, their suggestion for that purchase. But instead to make sure we are not duplicating our resources. Do we already have that resource that can be achieved and save that money? And put it towards our, our staff that are so critical to keeping our, our students moving forward. So, uh, it's just a little bit of a different approach. Sometimes it can be, um, a little, a little, um, surprising. But I think that the fact, once you in- involve people and let them really, um. Our, our administrators and our department leaders and our, our stakeholders. They know what works in their buildings. They know what works with their kids at home and they know. And that feedback is so critical for, for especially in a business office, we kind of. While we work at a school, we don't work in the school, right? And our experts are in these buildings every day. So listening to them, where do they need help? Where do they need those resources to be focused is exactly my approach to, to building a budget.
Excellent.
Yeah, just wanted to give you a heads up as to what that meant and, uh, likely moving that into February now. But just wanted to, in case you, what is budget one oh one? There you have it.
Are you envisioning a joint session for that? Um, and more of a work session setting?
So we're, yeah, we're believing that February work session is probably going to be the best platform for that. So that it can be a more collaborative, um, uh, two-way conversation based versus a, um, you know, a board meeting. We have, it's still a public meeting. We still have our certain rules, but the work sessions are really meant to be a little bit more of an engagement. Um, still kind of figuring out exactly how that looks. Sometimes there's, you know, maybe little, little. Hey, put your heads together and here's a bunch of post-it notes and jot it down or what. But, you know, the feedback from our board members, our budget committee, and then inviting our community to come and, and provide that feedback. You know, it's, it, it's, it's critical that we listen to our stakeholders. It's also critical that we find a way to hear the voices that don't often speak up. And that is my concern. And I, I shouldn't say that is my concern. That is a big concern of mine that oftentimes. Our loud voices get heard and they get heard very well. But what about some of those voices that aren't comfortable coming to a public session? And how do we get, how do we get those voices when they're unspoken?
To possibly, your question is, I'll make sure that within the budget committee, that is this, is, are we. Labeling this as a budget committee meeting, or if not, which was probably my preference, would be to communicate to budget committee members. Is you are the audience and we encourage you to jot your questions down. The participation conversation would be just like any other board meeting where you're having a conversation with us. Budget committee members, if you have questions, schedule an appointment afterwards with Kim or me and we'll walk you through those questions. Cause we want to make sure we're following all the public meeting laws regarding their, their role in that meeting. We, we definitely want to get them up to speed and get them excited about doing the work, but it wouldn't be a budget committee meeting.
You good?
Yeah.
Any other questions? What are we doing about, to go back on IIA? Are you bringing back?
So I'm, I'm not hearing any recommendations of language changes, so it will be back on the January, uh, agenda for adoption.
Okay.
I searched and searched. I didn't find your additional sentence change in my link.
Really? No, I was looking too. That's why I was like, a little bit confused on it.
I finally printed what was on the policy statement and it's just not on mine.
It, I just pulled it up and it wasn't.
Off of the memo?
If you go, if you're going to the website, yeah, that's, that's the.
That hasn't been adopted yet. So this is just.
No. Yeah, that's why I was like, what? So I go to the exact same thing you're on? That's strange. I know.
I saw, I opened it a couple of different times thinking it was updated.
Probably same thing. We are on, so yeah, my K.
Yeah, I think I know, and I will do some sleuthing, but I think I know.
I think we're.
Okay, I will make sure that you have it. And so, yeah, sorry about that.
Okay, that's fine. And you're adding that to our list? Yeah, okay. So our agenda is seven fifteen. Thank you.
Are those cookies, Robert?